The common council of the city of Glendale is now in session. All rise to the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, you're calling.
I am calling.
Clerk tonight.
Yes. Mayor Kennedy?
Here.
Alderwoman Vukovic? I don't see her online.
No.
Alderman Doherty?
Here.
Alderman Gilheart?
Here.
Alderman Bailey?
Bailey's excused out of the country.
Alderman Schmelsing?
Here.
Alderwoman Shaw, you have a quorum.
Thank you.
If I could just say that the clerk, if I could just jump in, the clerk is there in an audit for the election and they've been counting ballots since about eight AM this morning. They're still doing it. That's why she's unavailable.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate the update. Is this at the county?
Uh, no, it's here in the conference room. Her and Abby and several other employees have been in there all day, um, just doing an audit of the election.
Okay.
It's supposedly random, but we seem to get picked every two years to do an audit. So there, I don't know how many they're counting, but it's two districts.
Good to know. And I bet the numbers will be exact like they always are every time we get audited. Whenever anybody says that elections are not done correctly in the state of Wisconsin, I can cite Glendale as a perfect example of one that does it right. So.
I walked in at five thirty and I hadn't heard differently. So you're probably right.
Yeah. All right. Public comment. Glendale residents, business owners and property owners are invited to speak to the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda, but are within the city's ability to regulate or control. Is there anyone wishing to speak to a non-agenda item? All right. Move on then to the first item of business tonight is the public hearing on the 2025 annual program budget. And so review the public hearing and then the review and action on the resolution that adopts the 2025 budget and establishes the 2024 city tax levy. I will turn it over to Mr. Warwick for any introduction before I open the public hearing.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Kennedy. At the previous council meeting, we had a review of the draft 2025 budgets. Um, it's been presented for consideration tonight with a few minor modifications. The big modification really didn't end up in any change of revenue and expenses, just reallocated some of the property taxes to the state aid personal property taxes. So the amount stayed the same. Uh, the property tax levy did reduce by approximately $500,000 and then $500,000 was added for personal property tax, um, state aid. Other than that, uh, we've, we neglected to create the 75th anniversary fund. So that fund has been created and placed in the budget for a hundred thousand dollars in revenue and expenses. And a couple other minor changes for the squad car camera replacement system to align with a budget that was approved at the previous council meeting as well. So tonight we just asked for any more comments, questions or public inputs. Um, and then there's a resolution to adopt the 25 budget and the 2024 property tax levy.
Open it first. The members of the council have any questions for this? I open the public. All right. Now going to open the public hearing. Glendale residents, business owners and property owners are invited to speak to the council about any questions or concerns they have with the 2025 annual program budget. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this year's budget? Second call, anyone wishing to speak on about the Glendale 2025 proposed program budget? And third and final call, anyone wishing to speak in the public hearing? All right. I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Gelhard, seconded by Doherty. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
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 Opposed, no? Public hearing is. Um, for consideration tonight is a resolution that adopts the 2025 city budget and establishes the 2024 city tax levy. Can I get a motion to approve the resolution, please? Moved by Vukovic. Is there a second?
Okay.
Seconded by Doherty. Any discussion? All right. Can we get a motion then to adopt the resolution, please? Or sorry, is all in favor of adopting the resolution, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. All right. Next is the consent agenda. Uh, there are one, two, three, four, six items on the consent agenda, the minutes of our last meeting, approval of three payments for work that was done this summer, as well as placing the monthly reports and accounts payable on file. Can I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda, please?
Alloved.
Moved by Gelhard. Seconded by Schmelsing. Um, hearing no objection, we will move on and adopt the consent agenda will be considered adopted by unanimous consent. Move on to new business. First item is a discussion on the procedures for distribution of refuse and recycling bins, and I will turn it over to the city administrator.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, so with the new contract with John's disposal, it's, it's a little bit of a complicated and cumbersome process, and it unfortunately won't be perfect for everybody, particularly around this time of year. But I just wanted to go over the plan of operation right now, generally for the distribution of the garbage and recycling containers. Uh, so the, the agreement with GFL will expire December 31st of this year, and then the collection for John's starts January 1st, but that's a holiday. So collection will actually start, I believe it's on Wednesday, January 2nd. So in order to get all the cans out to all the individuals or bins on time, the delivery will start approximately December 6th or December 9th and run through the 16th. If anyone dares to go on vacation during that time, they may be without cans. So that could be an issue. But no, they, they will deliver them outside of the time period, or we can make other combinations if, if people are gone. Um, the larger.
Can I ask a question? You were talking about those dates. Monday is the 30th, Tuesday is the 31st. Will GFL pick up the Monday and Tuesday garbage? Then Wednesday is the holiday. Wednesday is the first. So I assume Wednesday pickup would be moved to Thursday, Thursday to Friday, Friday to Saturday, which we always do with the delay. I'm just curious if, who's going to pick up the beginning of that week?
All out. So it's my understanding GFL will complete those last two days, Monday and Tuesday.
Okay.
Right. And then they'll take the carts at that time. So the previous week, once they pick up, they'll take the carts as they're picking up. And then those last two, the Monday, Tuesday will stay for the following week, 30, 31, and those will be picked up then at that time too and emptied.
Okay. So John's will be dropping off cans toward the end of the month and then we're going to set those aside and use the GFL cans through the 31st.
Yes.
Okay.
That is our understanding. So.
All right. Well, let's hope that we can get that out to our residents.
And I, and just, and I, well, that and I also did talk to the, the Johns, uh, uh, associate, whatever today. And I did, just to kind of clarify some things. So they are more than willing to make things right for us and go up and above. So there are things in, in place to make sure it goes as seamless as possible. Yes, there probably will be issues. There always is, but they want to minimize that. And he did assure me again tonight that they will do everything they can to make it as seamless as possible.
They're dropping off the big, what are they, 96 gallon?
They're dropping off the big 96, and he said that's how they come from the manufacturer. So yes, there will be requests for 48. He is hoping to, he told me, have all the 48s swapped with the 95s before January 1 collection.
Okay.
So again, trying to be seamless as possible.
And then some of them will get swapped.
Because they come from the manufacturer that way. They're all loaded on the truck. They're going to sort them all, store them at the park, deliver them all, and then swap them per request at that time before the January 1 to start collection.
Okay. Alderwoman Vukovic?
The one who is located in the size of the garbage cans. What size do we have right now?
Most residents have the very large 90, they're 95.
Five, yes.
95 gallon cans.
It'll be about the same as the ones here unless they want a smaller.
Right.
Correct.
Everyone gets the big can unless you request a smaller.
And the can size is located in the hallway, as an example. That is the 95 gallon size.
Thank you very educated.
Are there any other questions for staff? Yeah. Alderman Gelhard?
And just a clarification, because I went through this with some of my constituents. So they're going to drop off the larger cans to everybody first, and then if you want the smaller one, you make the request and they'll come and swap it out later. So, but just so everyone knows, you get the big one first.
Correct. And there shouldn't be any garbage in them because they won't be in use then because you still have GFL to the point. So that obviously the middle of December, you'll still be using GFL.
Yeah, there will be a time where people have four sets of cans at their house.
You'll still have your old cans, plus you'll get the new ones.
But to be clear, that's a good point. If I may interrupt for one second, they will not collect. So if anyone resident tries to hold on to the GFL, they're not going to get picked up. So they have to put them in after January 1 in the Johns cars if they're not already picked up. So if somebody's trying to hold on to a GFL for whatever reason, they can't. GFL is going to collect all those and dispose of them. So it'll be strictly Johns cards going forward.
Okay. That's Alderman.
One other thing, um, District One, please don't call me because they have not pulled their garbage cans in. Um, that this is one of my biggest things they, but can we wait at least a, a week till after the fact before you start calling me with the, um, they are not pulling their garbage cans in? That's a request from your Alderwoman.
That is a very good point because after that last collection, they may sit out until GFL picks them up for a week or more. Correct? Because by the time you have the last collection, the GFL will hopefully come by quick, but we should definitely clarify on how long they may sit out. Particularly with snow.
Because normally by, by rule, you, the day, like I, I get collected on Mondays, so I can put it out Sunday evening and they have to be pulled out back in by, I think sundown or whatever, the, the day they collect.
That's preordance, yeah.
And that's not going to happen and we're gonna have them sitting out there, but because this is the way the world works, some few people will call and say, those people haven't pulled their garbage cans out. And at least I can say, you know, we talked about it at the council meeting, um, this is an exception to the rule for the next probably 10 days, give or take.
Right.
Um, bear with us.
I'll do social media posts. I'm sure Abby will as well. We'll try to do our best to get as much, up to as many people as we can.
And direct them, if they're GFL, direct them to us. I mean, we'll make sure the GFL gets them. I mean, it's just, it's just to take the load off of you all.
But it's still just one of those things where it's a, a transition, be patient.
Correct.
It's not going to bring your property value down by that much over 10 days.
Just, just one clarifying. So when is GFL going to pick theirs up at their last collection? They're just going to take the bin at that point.
So recycling is two weeks out. So recycling carts will be gone before the end of the year and then it's as needed. So only two that are going to stay out are Monday, Tuesday. So that last week, it'll be, they'll go through, so the Wednesday we picked up, Thursday and so on, Monday and Tuesday are still there till the 30, 31st, then those are emptied and picked.
Yeah. So it's, it's just, I, I guess, I feel like we're over complicating things like, go out your garbage like you normally would and then.
And just leave it there.
And then just leave it there and the bin will disappear. A new bin will show up and, you know, just don't put anything in the new bin until they take away the old one.
This will cause a giant snowstorm. Sorry.
Yes, exactly.
Stay there because then it's going to be another issue.
But we'll just, we'll, we'll just use these as barrels along all the construction.
Yeah.
Just flip them over. All right. Anyway.
Okay. Thank you for, I, I think I understand. Any other questions?
The last point is, is walk-up service. There is a form where if people request walk-up service because they're unable to walk it out, GF, or not GF, sorry, Johns will, will perform that service. There is a form that they asked to fill out. Uh, it will be placed on the city's website.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Emick. Appreciate it. Uh, next item is a discussion that I actually asked to have placed on the agenda. We had our state senator reach out and request to sit down with Carl and me. And so we've got that meeting scheduled for December 2nd. And she's specifically interested in discussing what kind of legislative priorities the city of Glendale might have. Um, so this is really kind of more of a brainstorming here to, for you guys to tell me things that you want to make sure we discuss. I can tell you, I've already listed in the memo, two items that I'm planning to discuss with her. One is to align the expenditure restraint exemptions with the levy limit exemption. So for example, an increase in the fire department budget can be taken outside of the levy limit. But because we participate in the expenditure restraint program, that amount of money does not also correspond to expenditure restraint. So we can raise it, but we can't spend it. We still have to take it from somewhere else, yeah, within the expenditure restraint program. Uh, and this has been an issue we've discussed, going back to Senator Darling, who was working with us on it and wanting to get it tucked in as budget language. And we were never able to get, you know, that, that, that particular clause put into the budget. So that's one of the issues I'm going to, um, discuss with Senator Drake. And then the other is, uh, the consideration of a municipal sales tax for municipalities other than just the city of Glendale. At the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, I was in the, uh, medium sized cities discussion and, um, the question came up and there was overwhelming support for us having the right. Um, one of the things that was, uh, was proposed, um, for us to consider is that Milwaukee is the only city of the first class, get, got a two cent sales tax. Should a city of the second class, which would be Madison, Green Bay, would they be allowed to have a one cent sales tax? And then cities of the third and fourth class like us get a half cent sales tax. When Carl and I were talking, I think Carl said, based on our sales tax numbers for the city of Glendale, because we have such a large commercial area of the city, we're looking, it was at five to seven million dollars if we had a half cent sales tax. So imagine what that could do to relieve property taxes and, uh, also capture money from all the people who come into our city every day and utilize our infrastructure, but don't ever pay for it. Now, we are a city of 13,500 people at night, but in the daytime, we are between 60 and 80,000 on any given day. So having those folks contribute to our tax base would be really helpful. Uh, so those are two things I'm going to talk with her about. Um, I do believe the municipal sales tax, it's only a matter of time. That conversation, uh, as we were talking at the league, it may not happen this biennium, but the conversation's already starting, um, with, at the legislative level. And so, you know, it might be next biennium before it passes, but at that point, it would be an option for this council to consider if, if something like that gets approved. So, um, I know, uh, Carl, you said when you were in, um, in Illinois, Lake Villa had, was it a one cent? You were telling me the, the numbers of what you drew, what you brought in and you don't, it was a village that didn't have nearly the amount of shopping district that we have.
Yeah, correct. We're a very, very small community and we had a 1% sales tax, got about 1.5 million dollars. Um, a village like Gurnee, which is double our size with Gurnee Mills and they have Six Flags, they're about 18 to 19 million on a 2% sales tax. So I guess we'd be four to five million dollars just based on those estimates. And the village of Gurnee has no property tax for its, um, um, for the village.
Because all the rest of us, when we go to Gurnee Mills or go to Six Flags, we pay for it. Yep. All right. So I'm curious, any question or any ideas, uh, issues that people would like me to raise with the state senator? Yep. Alderman Schmelsing?
I threw some thoughts together. Um, I'll just ramble them off quick.
Why don't you ramble them off and then email them?
You.
We brought this, so I don't have to write them all down. They already have them written.
I got them written down. Yeah. Uh, we just moved to the personal property tax reimbursement from the state. It'd be nice if that actually grew with inflation because otherwise it's going to diminish over time. So I think that would be an easy thing just to tack on, I would hope. The, uh, we also have been removing some properties from the flood plain because of, you know, MSD, concerned about flooding and increased flooding from, you know, climate change and such. So, um, if there was some way that we could keep that in our equalized value because, or at least not have it removed from our ability to levy, because we still have to pay for roads and stuff, you know, the infrastructure is still there. Taxation for not-for-profits. I know we always have to do pilots, um, pilot programs for certain organizations. It'd be nice if it was just flat across the board and it would be, you have to cover the cost of fire rescue, you know? Please, some of the basics that, uh, we can't fee for. So I think that would also be level footing for some of the religious organizations as well as educational institutions that might be in town. And then also anything we can do to encourage brown site remediation. So I know there's one in my district that, you know, it's just a, a struggle to get redeveloped. They're all over the city. So anything like that, that we can get plugged into or find a way to benefits economic development beyond having to do a TIF. And, uh, those were my laundry list. Any conversation, discussion otherwise?
I'll send them over. All some. Items you'd like me to.
Well, as we're getting. As we're giving this list, uh, your list, uh, thing, but I just, the nonprofit one, um, how do we do that? Where you're gonna, you know, I disagree with it. I think it should be first come, whatever we decide on the basis, and it can't be a flat rate because every single person is different and every single organization is different. And what their income is is also different. So I don't necessarily want to see something like that unless it was a sliding scale. And even in sliding scale incidences, but I run a nonprofit, so I don't know what my money is from, from week to, or year to year. So I, I have a, an issue with that one and, and, and also that nonprofits are taking a hit both federally all over the place, and I don't think we need to add to their hits. So I don't, it's up to you how you want to handle that.
Yeah, it's, it's not a simple solution. I'm just trying to find, you know, we have other municipalities that I know of large hospital systems that move in that are not profit, but they make plenty of money and plenty of, um, profit for their employees and staff, even though they may be considered not-for-profit. So yeah, I don't have the answer on how it should be done, but I just see it as something that could be focused upon because I know we have some, you know, religious institutions that are, um, paying a pilot, some that aren't. I know we've kind of established a policy now for that, which is good and on our local level, but also they have some educational institutions that are getting, um, state and private money and, uh, others just get public money.
I think the healthcare one is an interesting one to raise because the orthopedic hospital is a for-profit hospital and they do pay property taxes, but the Aurora Hospital on Good Hope does not pay property taxes. It's a not-for-profit. And it's a huge building worth a whole lot of money with a company that's, you know, worth billions. So.
All right. Stop talking there in my district. So I don't want them to.
We're just thinking the value that'd be added to your district.
Right. But the, the tax base would go up anyways. But no, I definitely understand where, um, Alderwoman Vukovic is coming from. There's, there's definitely not-for-profits that are, um, in need of that, um, subsidy, so to say.
Thank you. Alderman Doherty, go ahead.
Good list, Steve. I think that's the, when you talked about indexing anything, that's always been a challenge. A whole bunch of things don't get indexed. And when we move those properties off, it's forever loss of property tax. So that's going to be the, when you have stuff for the, anything that's moved for, um, the flood plain stuff, that's a forever issue.
And we have what? Another 20 something homes that we might still acquire?
Well, and if you read the 2030 plan from MMSD, they have a thousand structures they're trying to remove. I mean, I think they're counting garages and dog houses, but they were, you know, their plan was to get rid of tons of things on the river in the long run. That's a big deal to us.
Yeah. I don't think it's a thousand in Glendale. It's a thousand total though.
On the river.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Alderman Gelhard, go ahead.
I'd like to see more revenue sharing. I realize that's a, a theme that municipalities have been, uh, talking about for years, but, um, yeah, I mean, I think that's, you know, if you look at the numbers, that, that, that number really hasn't moved for a, a long time. So.
Thank you. Alderman, go ahead.
And I'm going to say this because, um, even though it may be unrealistic, getting rid of the, um, levy limit, actually letting the municipalities, the villages dictate what they need, and then also letting the residents decide what they need by voting. So, um, I, I believe that.
Actually, I was a part of a conversation in one of the sessions at the, um, at the state league, we were talking about levy limits. And the levy limits were put in place with an assumption that every community had the ability to grow with net new construction. And as a landlocked, fully developed city, we have to look at like, how do we take a $1 million property and make it worth 30 million? So we've had to invest so much time in a business, in focusing on business development or large scale development, because it's the only way we can get any net new construction. And so, you know, I think that, you know, levy limits that don't have some sort of an exclusion for a landlocked, fully developed community, um, really do put some communities at a significant disadvantage. You know, Oak Creek continues to, you know, create new subdivisions because they've got old farmland they can use. Same with Franklin, the same with, you know, pretty much everything in Waukesha County. There's so much area for so many other communities to, to grow and annex and, and, or take even areas within their community that are undeveloped and develop them. And we're not in that particular position. So it definitely makes sense to, to have a, an under, I guess, to have the legislature understand more how levy limits do significantly impact in a negative way, um, some communities more than others.
That would, in reality, that would be most of all North Shore.
Yeah.
Um, you know, Shorewood's landlocked. We are, Whitefish Bay has some, a little bit of land, I think, but it's not, most of North Shore is landlocked. Um, and except for smaller communities, but those communities don't necessarily want to build. They like the way their, their, um, cities are built and that's their decision. But I think it has to bring, I'm pushing for more of local control for what we are doing in our state.
Thank you. Any other?
Could I just make a comment real quick? I, I feel that we are allowed to levy or whatever we want for capital improvements, yet we are so restricted on operations, which forces us to borrow for anything and everything. If the state would give us enough money to buy guns and for the police department, not just for everybody, um, and, uh, and, uh, you know, garbage trucks and squad cars and computers, we could save a lot of money because we're buying a car or a truck for $300,000. It costs the taxpayers 500. Give us the money to buy these outright so we have the cash to do it and we could save a lot of money.
Any other questions or any other ideas? All right. So this is helpful. I've taken down a couple of things that Alderman Gelhard and, and Alderwoman Vukovic have said, and Alderman Schmelsing, you'll send me your list. Okay. Perfect. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Uh, good discussion. We'll move on now to the next item, which is also a discussion. This is about open records and social media, and I will turn it over to the city attorney.
Thank you. Um, I, I think the best way to handle this might be to, um, to entertain questions after I make just some general remarks. And, you know, this really is an area where it's technology outrunning, you know, the, the, the regulation and, and, and the, the traditions of way things have been handled for years. As you know, you know, generally speaking, the municipal clerk is designated as the, um, custodian for all the records for a public body such as, you know, the council and, and in general. And, um, as time has passed and, and, and ways of communication have changed greatly. Now you've got not only social media, but cell phones and, and it, it impacts the way that people are conducting meetings and, and, and then you got, then you add Zoom to the mix. So it's really, you know, it's, things have moved so fast that these, these, these regulations and the laws have, have struggled to keep up. And I'll give you one specific example of that. I get emails once in a while that say, uh, from some private company offering for the low, low price of thousands and thousands of dollars a year to monitor all of the social media websites for any of your municipal officials so that we can retain the records that someone might request in an open records request. So as we've, uh, and I was, you know, delete, 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 but, um, uh, at some point, who knows? Maybe we'll end up there. So it back in 2009, you know, this question came up and there's an attorney general opinion on that's talked about in the, um, in the memo where somebody opened a, a site called Making Salem Better, uh, was the town chair. There was an open records request and, and also the person wanted access to the closed group. Uh, the AG said, you don't have to give them access to the closed group, but since it's called Making Salem Better and you're purporting to be acting in your official capacity and discussing items related to your authority. Well, if they make open records requests, you got to respond. So as that's gotten bigger and, and, and larger, the, um, the other issue that's come in is blocking on social media. And there's been a number of federal, uh, cases and Supreme Court cases on that. And then there was sort of the, the Linkey case that came last year, or actually not last year, but earlier this year, where they said, um, when, uh, when determining whether you could block somebody, the, really the question there was whether the official engaged in municipal action or state action on social media. And they said they do that when they possess actual authority to speak on the municipality's behalf on a matter and, and have purported to exercise that authority on a so, social media post. So they said it's a, it's, it's, that's a little bit of guidance, but it's still a case by case basis. So I think that the, the takeaway here is that if you've got a, a, a social media site, I'll use Facebook as an example, and you have a. is that if you've got a, a, a social media site, I'll use Facebook as an example, and you have a, a page that you've designated as public. Um, um, and it says, you know, so-and-so older person, person's page, and you're continuously posting things related to municipal, the municipal actions or meetings, et cetera. It's probably going to be determined that you're acting in your official capacity. And as opposed to a private site where you have quote unquote friends as opposed to followers. And yeah, maybe you occasionally post something that says, you know, there's a meeting coming up next week. People might be interested in. Um, that's probably going to be closer to the private as opposed to social. But um, you know, if you've got those and you're out there with them and, and you've got this, those social media posts, the Twitter accounts, whatever have you, you're going to have to, you know, have that accessible and available if somebody makes an open records request and we'll work through that collaboratively to find those records because the clerk, although she keeps all of the meeting packets, all of the um, things that are provided uh, that are linked to on the website. You don't have to keep all that and throw it in a closet somewhere because if somebody makes an open, open records request, we work through the clerk for that. But the clerk doesn't keep your social media posts. So if there's an open records request, we'll come to you individually and say, what do you have that might be responsive and we'll work through it together. The other area where I have seen municipalities get into trouble is with text messages where there's a chain going, um, you know, hey, who's, who's gonna, who's going to support this item? Who's going to support that item? Um, if you vote for this, I'll vote for that. Don't vote for this. Don't vote for that. The, the problem is you run into open, open meetings issues where you've got a negative quorum or a walking quorum. And uh, somebody could say, well, there's things going on behind the scenes here that we can't see. So um, you know, that, that, that's run into, run into violations justice with the use of email. So I think that's, you know, the, the takeaways are that yes, you can run into posts that constitute a public record under Wisconsin law. Um, if you block somebody on one of those sites, uh, in your official capacity, can, we can run into problems there under federal law. Um, so you know, if you have questions, feel free to reach out and feel free to ask. And then just be careful with text messages so you don't run into either a negative quorum or a walking quorum as well. So um, I think that's really the big takeaways. Um, courts will continue to struggle this and uh, and continue to adapt um, as the technology changes on a daily basis, really. So um, you know, I, it, it was something that Carl had, had, had asked about. And it seemed like a good opportunity to just say, hey, you know, let's take a look at the bigger picture and let's just give everybody a copy of this memo. And I think, I think one of the things we'll do is when somebody is newly elected, we'll share this with them as well, just so that they have a, they come in with their eyes wide open about all this stuff. And we'll work through it collaboratively as, if, in response to any requests. I think there's a lot of questions.
Yeah. So the, just a couple of, of quick comments here. So um, you know, I post on Nextdoor, but I do throw, do so through an agency account that is the city's. So Carl has the ability to post. He's delegated that to Abby. Um, so anything coming from the city administrator comes to the administrative assistant and then I post on Nextdoor. So that's all city connected. I also have a Glendale mayor, Brian Kennedy, Facebook page that is actually connected to the city. So anything the city posts automatically gets uh, connected to my, I, I set mine up, but I've been able to tie it to the city's uh, Facebook page. So those are both official and only have official business. Um, in, but I know that a number of the alders have Facebook pages from when they ran for office. Um, if those are more campaign-related, um, I don't have one anymore. I took it down after April. So um, but if those are campaign-related about a public figure that is, you know, running for office, how does that connect here? Yeah. You're not in the microphone. Yeah.
Yeah, I, that, that's a great point. I, i- in my opinion, um, based upon the federal case law that I've read, there has to be at least a demarcation line with respect to campaign-specific dedicated campaign posts and specific dedicated campaign, you know, Twitter or whatever, what have you. There, there, there has to be. And that's um, and I think that that relates to the test that the federal uh, US Supreme Court um, came up with in the uh, Linkey case because um, in that particular case, if you're speaking as an elected, if, you know, someone who's running for an office in a campaign site, it doesn't necessarily mean that you possess actual authority to speak on the municipality's behalf on that site. You know, you're doing so to promote your campaign. So I think it would probably fail the uh, the public test uh, under the lid, the lid key um, criteria. So there absolutely has to be because you run into um, free speech issues as well. And you, 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 you run into constitutionally protected rights to, to free speech as well. So I, in, in my mind, that's where there's a demarcation line. If you've got a dedicated site, that's campaign-related.
Thank you. Alderman Vukovic, go ahead.
Right. Okay. I, I hear you, but I'm going to use mine as an example. Um, so I have, I have my personal account that I rarely, I just went through and I think I went back to May. And I think the only thing I've done citywide was say something about a water utility, something or other that we wanted everybody to share. That's the only thing I've pulled back since May. But I do have a, a certified political account through um, Meta, which is, it's a political account. So yes, I run my, my campaigns there, but I also, people stay on there to inform, be informed of what's going on. So I will post stuff for the city on that one. So that's the one that is open to public records. And then.
I would agree.
Okay. And that is fine because I guess I don't really care one way or the other on that part. And but would my personal one be open records when I just share? Like I think I went through and the first thing in May was we were talking about a water utility thing. I, I posted it that and I can't find anything, you know, previous to that. And the only other thing I do is I, I think two years ago I said, thank you for electing me. That was the gist of the, what I do on my private. Now, would those constitute, and, and then if you can answer those, then that would actually make it you know, more understandable in my world at least.
Well, that's a great question. So. Consistently, the Wisconsin Attorney General has said that it is the message and the content that is the determining factor as to whether something constitutes a record as opposed to the platform or the media through which that was transmitted. And so it is possible, it is theoretically possible um, that you could post something in your quote-unquote official capacity on a private site. Um, and if somebody made a, made a request for that record, we would have to look at whether or not um, we, you know, we'd have to take on an individual case basis. Do we have to produce that or not? Now, if you have two separate accounts, if you have, as you described, one, that's a social account that has quote-unquote followers, that has an official title related to it, that's his councilperson. And then you have your private account. If somebody made an open records request, I could, you know, we could go into court and we could reasonably defend the fact that, look, here's the private realm, here's the public realm. Okay? And um, there's no reason to invade the private realm over here. Um, because um, all of the social media posts relating to the official duties in which you, you, you were acting or speaking on behalf of, you know, the council or any other municipal subcommittee is on this site and anyone can have access to that and that's fine. We'll give you the posts. We'll give you copies of the post, whatever, but the other one should not be um, should not be breached. That's a, that's a pretty reasonable argument. And you know, we might get the judge to go along with that. Where it gets more difficult is if you don't have those two different sites. And, and sometimes, you know, you, you might go for a month and a half without posting anything other than personal items. And then, you know, there's a hot button issue that's going to come up associated with a vote on a be it the budget or, or, or a development. And then you start posting, people are responding in kind and you're answering questions. Then um, you know, somebody could reasonably come in and say, you know, my neighbor Fred told me that they saw this on his, on the uh, social media post. And there were, there were questions being answered as to what the development agreement might look like. Then I think we're going to have to produce those. There's a pretty good argument that uh, those are public records and we would have to produce those. Because again, the attorney general's opinions have consistently said it's the content as opposed to the location of the content that is the determining factor. And so the open records laws in Wisconsin, it's really a bit of a different analysis than what the federal uh, US Supreme Court was looking at in the Lidkey case um, or the Linkey case when they were really talking about um, platforms where people were being blocked.
Go ahead.
Oh, so um, and I also have um, back in the day, I had a stalker type person um, who would harass me. Um, and I think we went through the police department to stop them from sending, threatening.
Hmm. So in other words, could this person be blocked?
Yeah, I have blocked them on my, and that's what I'm asking. I have blocked them on my political page because it was harassing and it was to the point that they were following me and, and stuff. So now I have to ask if I should unblock them.
There is still content that can be removed from the site um, or, or, or blocked. Um, if it's offensive, uh, it constitutes a threat, obscene. Um, or there's, you know, other reasons that we've coordinated with law enforcement and law enforcement says that, you know, that there's a problem with this particular post and that, that, that could, that could fall under the category. I'd have to know more information, but if it was based upon a documented harassment, a documented case of harassment, um, and uh, there were, you know, inappropriate language being used or threats being made, then um, you know, we would absolutely, we would absolutely support that and we would, we would, we would defend that. And um, you know, and I, I, I think ultimately at the end of the day, a court would probably find that the blocking was appropriate. So it doesn't mean that it's a, it's a wild, wild west free-for-all. There are still certain things that could be blocked.
Thank you. Any other questions? Alderman Schmelz, go ahead.
I, I'm kind of seeing this as three classifications then because you know, can't be simple. You got your personal, let's go back to like Meta or something. You got your personal one. You're just friends with people, you know, keep that personal. And then you have um, for me, I have one that's an Alderman page where I'll mostly repost things from other um, formal sources like the city's um, posts and such, um, other candidates or not candidates, other electeds and folks. And then the, the last one would be like a campaign one because you want to keep that separate for campaign reasons and finance and everything else. So even if it's free, it's still, you know, a different source. So I'm seeing that's kind of what I'm hearing as a best practice when it comes down to social media.
I think so. And, and I'll give you an example of uh, when there was a new police chief that started uh, in another community I work with, and they handed him a phone to use. And um, he said, well, I already have a cellphone, you know, do I really have to use? I have a smartphone. Do I have to use two of them? Said, no, but think about it this way. The court calls, uh, or somebody makes an open records request and the court says that they want to do a uh, in-camera review to find out what's, what's on your personal phone might be public-related, subject to open records and what's not. If you have two phones, I can just hand them this one and say, here you go. That's the public one that the city pays for. Take anything off you want. And then you can keep the other one and we never, ever, ever have to have anyone go through the other one to see what's, might be public and what's not. I think that's a good analogy. So if you kind of make that demarcation line, we can absolutely go, you know, um, and, and defend protecting the, 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 the personal site. Um, as long as there's, you know, as long as there's, there's not created a public space where there's public discourse that's continuing on there. You know, you might post something that says, hey, you know, check over, check over my Aldermanic page um, where there's, there's uh, going to be a post about a meeting coming up. And people are going to be engaged on that issue there. Here, see my other page. And I, I don't see anything wrong with that in any way, shape or form.
Other questions? All right. Go ahead, Alderman Doherty.
At times where like Glendale, Arizona gets mixed up with us and then you have people sending you zillions of emails or something. And I've blocked some of those people because they're idiots. How's that work? You know, on, on email, like Outlook or something I'm using for City Mail and all, you know, I have different accounts, but I'm in the city account. But I don't feel like taking their email.
Sure. Well, I think that, that's different because it's, you haven't created a public forum where people to, for people to interact and confer and debate. You haven't created that public spaces. Just receiving an email is different than, you know, participating in a discussion or a meeting. And by the way, there's no legal compunction to respond to any of those people. So.
I was going to send some of them tinfoil because it had to do with the 5G stuff, but.
Yeah, yeah. The tinfoil hats, but um, yeah, no, there, I, in my opinion, there's a demarcation line there because you're just choosing not to respond to them and there's no legal compunction to do so anyway.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Appreciate that. All right. Our next item is a um, we need a motion to cancel our December 23rd common council meeting. Thank you. Move Alderman Shaw.
Second.
Second, Alderman Gelhard. Um, all those in favor of canceling our next meeting due to the holiday season, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, is no?
Upstate.
On abstention? Okay.
I just.
Okay. Actually, I already went through the Jewish calendar for the upcoming year um, to see if there were any conflicts with any of our meetings because the planning commission sets a calendar at the December meeting and I just sent all those to staff.
Thank you.
And I looked and it, there's no conflicts with any of our common council meetings.
Excellent.
There's quite a few conflicts with court. There's a lot of Thursdays next year. So, yeah. All right. Um, next item is an ordinance repealing and replacing section 7.4 Regulation of Transient Merchants. And I'll turn it back over to staff, Mr. Warwick.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Kennedy. I'll do a little brief introduction, then turn it over to our attorney. Um, the mayor had asked us to um, update the solicitor's ordinance to essentially um, prohibit solicitors from going to houses or dwelling units that have registered with the city. So this ordinance essentially, if we have a list of people here at the city that are on that list, we provide it to the solicitors and they are prohibited from um, soliciting at that dwelling unit. Um, when Attorney Bear and I reviewed the ordinance, we found a number of things that needed to be updated. Um, for example, it said you couldn't solicit after 9:00 PM, but it didn't have a star time in there. So we put in a star time. There was no definition of solicitor. So that was inserted in this. Um, and then a number of other changes were made just to clean up some of the um, regulations orders. But the, the real um, big part about this was the list.
So this actually was model, um, our friends in Whitefish Bay actually have this. So when you're going to get a transient merchant permit, they give you the list. It's essentially the equivalent of like a do not call list.
How do you get on the list again? Because I don't seem to where we had a list.
We don't have a list right now. We will, we will let people know that they can add their name to the list. So the clerk will then start maintaining a list of, or clerk staff will maintain a list of people that do not want to ever be solicited. And so when they come to get a transient merchant permit, what we'll give them is essentially, here's the list of homes that you may not, you may not, this is essentially our do not call list.
I'd like to do it the other way around. You gotta be on the list to get that. So just take everybody off the list to start off. You want to be on the list, put your name on.
I think we're in heaven now. That's.
I got the DNR to change their whole website because they had that backwards. And I complained to them and they actually fixed it. You used to have to opt out of them selling your name. I'm like, no, I should have to opt into having you sell my name. And they fixed it. So I, I would just, I'm all for this, but I'd like to have us just have, you have to be on the soliciting list in the future.
Any other questions?
Couple.
Yeah. Go ahead, Alderman Schmelz.
I, I saw the time moved from nine to seven.
From seven to nine.
Seven AM to nine.
Right.
There was no AM. It, sorry, the hours here are you cannot solicit. Um, current regulations prove at nine. Um, I believe the hours are nine to nine. I think I switched the seven and the nine in the memo.
I, I thought I looked in the ordinance. Maybe I had it wrong because it was late.
Let me just double check. Sorry.
But I thought it was like s- uh, 7:00 PM seemed a little bit early to stop knocking on doors, but I think it was or an hour after sunset because I agree it.
Yeah, it was an hour after sun. It, it was in our, or.
Now it's like 4:45.
It was nine and then I modeled it after again when I looked at Whitefish Bay and I'm just checking it real quick. I thought I moved it to nine or an hour after sunset. And I'm just checking it real quick. I thought I moved it to nine or an hour after sunset like Whitefish Bay had.
I'll double check.
But I will double check that right.
Yeah, cause I don't know, si- seven, seven's a little bit. Early in the summer, in my opinion, if you're just trying to catch the daylight, but uh, I don't know.
Oh yeah, so it, it was nine and I think I moved it, it was nine and I moved it to seven. So. I, I limited the hours by two, so you couldn't do it between seven and nine then.
Doesn't this say?
That's right, that's when you.
Yeah, so you can't do it.
You can't do it from 7:00 PM to 9:00 AM. The, the other one used to say you just couldn't do it after 9:00 PM.
I, I'm just thinking when I knock doors for, you know, getting constituent feedback or other. So, but that's the other question is the definition here does say solicitor, um, seem the only focusing on. Collecting money or trying to sell items, but not like in from, so if there's no money involved, you can.
Windows people, the pesticide people, they come and knock on your door.
So, as long as like, we can still talk to constituents like other times, I, I don't have an issue with the time change.
I believe that's the case, correct me?
Politicals excluded, Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts are excluded, you know, the kid with the band, you know, high school band fundraiser. Those aren't solicitors. These are the people that have to get a transient merchant permit to knock on your door.
There's a, there's a uh, exceptions part. Um, and there's, there's, I call it the Girl Scout rule, the Girl Scout, Girl Scout exception. So there's like 18 and under. If it's a school or philanthropic or like scouting of thing, they can go door to door without having the. Um, having to do it. So the, the, the only ones that have to get the license or the permit. Are the transient merchants. So the, cause that, that's, that's consistent with the way it is now. If, if you're. Door to door to solicit, you know, for the election. Um, you know, you don't, you don't, you know, or the religious group or whatever, you don't have to, you don't get the permit.
Yep, I think, I think I'm good. I just, as long as the definition means you can, you know, still elicit feedback, but not sell something, then. Then I think we're good.
Alderman Gelhard?
The girl, when someone gets a transient uh. Merchant permit, are they actually issued something, a document that they can show people that, you know, that they have a permit to, to solicit?
That, go ahead.
The answer is yes. Um, I know we don't have Megan here, so I don't know what it looks like. I've never seen it, but. Um, but yeah, they, they, they do, yeah. It's like a little piece of paper that has all the information. It's like a half sheet, yeah.
Jessica, do you know?
All what it looks like, but we do issue something because we've had some um, issues with vendors showing up at like the Fourth of July events. Blaming that they had transient merchant permit, uh, permits and I asked them to provide the information, then they didn't have them. So.
I know, it should, it should be issued to every person that they have representing their company.
Walking around it.
Yes.
Right, yep. All right, any other questions? Can we get a motion then to approve the ordinance as presented by the city attorney? Moved by Shaw.
Second.
Second by Gelhard. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those know? Motion carries.
A quick comment, I think the next time we have a newsletter, that form ought to be in there then, so you can get out in the list.
Yep. All right, uh, next item is uh, review and possible action on an ordinance repealing and replacing section 2.2.9 salaries. For the mayor and common council, so.
Okay, so the, um, there was some discussion about increasing the salaries as they had not been. Uh, adjusted since I think.
Nineteen.
Twenty nineteen, there we go. Um, so these are the numbers that were proposed and there's basically a state statute that says you can't vote. For your own uh, increase. So what it does, and, and this is. Relatively normal is that you stagger it. Um, to the next, starting with the next um, election cycle. And then as people either are reelected or, or someone else is selected or whatever it might be. Um, or when someone new is appointed that wasn't part of the voting process. Then the, the staggered amendment kicks in. So you serve out, you know, the remainder of your term and then it kicks in basically with the staggered alderperson, um. Service time or, you know, uh, terms, if terms, if you will.
Whoever's up for election this year would see the increase when they take office, so May 1st. And the current council members would still get the old salary for another year until they took office. Until they were reelected.
Staggered, right, exactly.
Okay. And the mayor's salary were going to affect in, but May 1st of 2027. Okay. That's different than we did it in 2019.
Oh, we had 22 years in before the other changed. So this one, we're really racking it up to only wait from 19.
It was 25 years. It was from 94 to 2019. And when we approved it in 2019, we made it take effect May 1st of 2021 for everybody. So half the council was in the middle of their term. And the other half had just gotten reelected and the mayor had just gotten reelected. So. Uh, this way now it'll just be, people will have, um, there'll be different salaries, right? So some members of the council will be making $7,200 for another year. And those that get reelected this year would be increased to 8,000.
We also included the judge's part of this. His salary wasn't codified before. It's not really the greatest. Section, it's titled council, but it still fits and we felt like putting all the um, elected positions in one spot and the code made sense.
Um, I do have a question about one, one phrase here, the language, if the next president of the council is an existing alderperson who participated in the vote for this increase. And has not been reelected, the new president shall. Not be entitled to the increase. So the president of the council. If it's somebody who stands for election this year would get 8,500 and the other person would get 7,500. Cause it currently it's 7,200 and 300 if you're the council president.
That is a correct statement.
Okay. Gonna be fun for whoever does payroll.
You could, I mean theoretically. You could theoretically, like you did the last time, just wait until everybody cycled out of it. And just put it out as a further date, but I, I thought that the, the. I mean, this is relatively common where it's staggered in communities, so not everybody has the same salary at the same time. And then it just kicks in with the next new. You know, new, new um, term, if you will.
Well, this becomes easier to maintain. Is to get a cycle to it as opposed to waiting.
Right.
Years between.
I just have one question and I, I raised this already with the city attorney, but I don't know that I got the, the, the answer. Clearly enough for me to understand it. Um, members of the state senate, every two years vote a pay increase. And so some of them just stood for election and others are in the middle of a term, but they all get the same pay at the exact same time. It's every two years with the legislative session. So they get paid the same amount or the, a certain amount for a legislative session. And it's set every two years. Members of the assembly have to stand for election every two years. But members of the state senate all get a pay raise on January 1st when they, when the new senate is seated. How is that? I mean, how can we have people making different amounts doing the exact same job is my, my question here.
Yeah, so the, the um. The state senate's governed by a different, different statute. So there's in, under 660505, it says that no elected official at the, this is at, just at the local level. Shall during the term of their office, collect a salary in excess of the salary provided at the time that they took office. So. It, um, and, and I, I've done this in other communities before and even there's, um. There's even actually a, a league opinion on this and it says. You know, because as a result of this statute, it's common for. Members of a governing body to have stay, different, different salaries, uh, because they'll kick in. So just think of it as whatever you got when you were elected, that's locked in for your term. And that's kind of the better way to think about it. Whatever you started with on day one, that's locked in through the end of that. Specific, specific term. And then when it turns over again, that's when the new one kicks in. And it's just, it's just state statute. Yeah.
All right, um, well, any other questions for the city attorney? Can we get a motion then to approve the ordinance as presented?
A move.
Second.
Moved by Vukovic, second by Doherty. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those know? Motion carries. All right, uh, last item before we have, we have a closed session that we're noticed for. Uh, there will be no action on anything in the closed session, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and do the commission, committee, board and staff reports and I will start with the city administrator.
Uh, the city hall will be closed Thursday and Friday in observation of Thanksgiving holiday and garbage will be delayed by one day. Um, for Thursday into Friday and Friday into Saturday.
All right, the attorney?
Uh, just wishing everyone a safe holiday with family.
All right, thank you. Um, deputy city administrator, having for the clerk?
Nothing to regard.
All right, chief?
Nothing to report. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Number one?
I had a report, but I would like to wish my condolences to um, Alderman Phillips Bailey. He lost his mother recently. Just wanna give him condolences.
Nothing to report tonight.
Nothing this evening.
For five?
Nothing for me.
Number six?
No report, but I'd like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, Merry Christmas and a happy new year and I'll see you all next year.
All right, so you won't be at our December meeting. Okay. Um, just have a couple of things. I was at National League of Cities. I attended quite a few sessions there. Really informative, uh, was interesting, um, some of the, the things that are done in other states. So I've got um, some folks sending me some details and some things I'll share with everybody when, uh, when I get some of their plans. Uh, but it was a really good experience. And then, um. Og Prep has uh, submitted their latest annual report. So if anybody wants to look at that, you're welcome to take a look at it. Um, I'm trying to think if it was anything else. The. North Shore Fire Department did not meet in November. We didn't have any, anything to meet for. I already reported on the ICC. I think that is everything. All right, um, so at that point, this point I would entertain a motion to convene in closed session. And specifically to discuss two items and they are the negotiations with the Glendale um, Professional Police Association, Local 212. As well as uh, discussion of, of with the city administrator about compensation ranges for other employees. Can I get a motion to convene in closed session, please?
A move.
Moved by Gelhard, second by Schmelzling. All those in favor of convening in closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
Host? We are in closed session. If you can pause the recording. Okay, uh, we met in closed session where we discussed the status of the Professional Police Association negotiations. As well as compensation and wage ranges for employees. Uh, there was a motion made by Alderman Gelhard and seconded by Alderman Doherty. Uh, to reconvene in open session. Uh, that vote was unanimous. We are now in open session. There is no more item, uh, no more business to consider and no other items of business. So can I get a motion to adjourn, please? Moved by Gelhard.
Second.
Seconded by Schmelzling, uh, to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those know? Stand adjourned at 7:23.